Okay, 135 members being present, 114 members being absent. The quorum is 125. So we obtain the quorum and the meeting will come to order. Per town meeting rule, I call upon all town meeting members and anyone else present who so desires to rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I call upon Christopher George, Information Technology Director, just to review the instructions for being recognized to speak and for how to go about voting on motions.
Everyone, if you wish to speak, please use the hand icon on Zoom. If you wish to raise a point of order or have a procedural question, use the hand icon in order to be recognized. If you have a computer or phone to question on voting, please use the Q&amp;A icon or call 508-603-6973, our support team for remote support. To vote on motions, click yes if you are in favor or click no if you are opposed.
Thank you, Christopher.
You're welcome.
And just lastly, in terms of meeting instructions, everybody should have received in the warrant mailing, town meeting rules for remote participation. I'd just like to apologize for one error I made, and that was on using the term unregistered voters at bullet point 16. Quite a non sequitur. What I meant to say was a resident of Milford who was not a registered voter or a non-resident of Milford needs the permission, or excuse me, the unanimous consent of town meeting in order to address this body. What is the pleasure of the meeting?
Mr. Moderator, if I may, I move that we conduct the May 24, 2021 annual town meeting remotely by means of the Key Point Video or Telephone Conference Platform.
Mr. Moderator, I second that motion. Motion's been made and seconded that the town vote to conduct the May 24, 2021 annual town meeting remotely by means of the Key Point Video or Telephone Conferencing Platform. Does any voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion to conduct the May 24, 2021 annual town meeting remotely by means of the Key Point Video or Telephone Conferencing Platform. Is the slide ready? Okay, at this time, please vote yes if you're in favor or no if you are opposed on the remote voting system. The motion is carried. At this time, I'll call upon Town Clerk, Mrs. Neves, to read the opening of the warrant and the officer's return of service, and she may dispense with the reading of the articles.
Good evening, everybody. This is the annual town meeting, May 24, 2021, Milford, Massachusetts, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester County. To either Constable of the Town of Milford in said county, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth aforesaid, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Milford, qualified by law to vote in town affairs, to meet remotely on the 24th day of May 2021 A.D. at 7:00 p.m. The annual town meeting will be held using a remote format. Town meeting members choosing to participate remotely will participate by means of the Key Point Video or Telephone Conferencing Platform requested by the moderator. Those choosing to participate remotely will be supplied with instructions for registering and using Key Point Conferencing Platform. Members of the public desiring to access the annual town meeting remotely may view the meeting in real time on Milford Public Television. The annual town meeting will then and there act upon the following articles.
Mr. Moderator, I move to dispense with the reading of the warrant articles.
Second, Mr. Moderator.
Motion made and seconded to dispense with the reading of the articles. Does any voter care to be heard?
We have, nope, we're good.
If not, the question comes upon the motion to dispense with the reading of the articles. All those in favor will vote yes. All those opposed will vote no. The motion is carried. At this time, we'll take up Article One, which is the reports of committees, boards, and town officers. Well, I know you don't have it, but that's what it is in the warrant. That's okay. So Article One is to take up any town reports. Do we have any reports?
Yeah, Chris Morin is looking to speak.
Yeah, Chris. Thank you.
Please call Chris Morin.
Yes, Mr. Morin from the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen. My report from the Finance Committee. Usually, obviously, I can see you in person and I can give you the slideshow presentation, so I'm going to do my best to verbally be able to pass along the information to you. Obviously, dealing with a total budget of $127 million is a complex thing, but I'm going to do the best I can to try to do it to you verbally. The first thing I want to do is I want to thank the financial team of the selectmen, the finance department, the finance committee, and all the subcommittee, I mean, all the, excuse me, the department heads, to work together to do something in an 11-month period. And I say this every year, that the budget does not get done in a short period of time. Actually, as soon as we get done this budget, we start thinking about next year's budget. So with that being said, this is a huge process that goes into getting the town where we need to be. With that being said, this year, we have estimated total revenues of $127,177,302. Revenue sources are mainly from three different, or several aspects, excuse me. Number one being state aid, number two being real estate taxes, and number three from miscellaneous things like room occupancy taxes from hotels, permits that are taken out by the town, that type of stuff. At this point, there has been a budget proposed, a total budget of $127,175,344. That's up from last year by about 3.4 million, or 2.8%. So a significant amount, but obviously, every year, everyone knows that with each year, costs of employment go up, everything like that. So you're always going to see a year-to-year increase on this. When you look at those two numbers, and obviously, you can't see them, but if you believe me, there's only a surplus of about $2,000 between our estimated revenues and our estimated expenses. In all my years on the Finance Committee, this probably is the tightest budget that I've ever seen. Just knowing that there are certain things, like obviously hotel tax that's been down, that type of stuff, that things are going to be tight this year. We may need to make some adjustments in the October town meeting to be able to make sure that we have a balanced budget. So the departments were instructed to have a 2.5% increase on personnel and a 0% increase on general expenses. Most of the departments were able to meet that. Several of the departments that I want to highlight that didn't meet that, just can explain that to you why in fact they did not, and all of them are justified in the eyes of the Finance Committee, the Selectmen, and the Finance Department. Trash removal was up 7%. That's a significant increase from the past. The reason for that is that the benefit of recycling has almost expired completely. We used to benefit from doing recycling. We used to get payments for recycling. Now, in fact, it actually costs us more to recycle than it does to do our regular waste. So with that change, trash costs have gone up significantly, and we needed to accommodate for that. The youth center, the youth department, excuse me, and actually specifically the youth center, had a 21.5% increase in their budget that is specifically tied to a program coordinator. They have been asking for years for a program coordinator. They have been lacking that position for quite a while and have been asking for it, and this year, in fact, they put in for it, and that's what their increase is. Highway had a 5.5% increase. That was strictly for contractual obligations, as we'll see later in one of the articles. And then the school department, obviously, this is the meat of our budget. The BBT budget was up 2.1%, which is about normal for them. Milford was up 6.26% budget increase. Many of that is driven by English language learners and special education mandates that are sent down from the town. This year was a remarkable year in which the Finance Subcommittee and the School Committee worked diligently and effectively from last town meeting till now to make sure that we worked together and we presented to each other what we were looking for. And I think great job was done by the school Subcommittee, by the Finance Committee, and a phenomenal job by the school committee to be able to meet that. The reason for the large increase this year, and people are like, why can we be spending that type of money on the schools? The state has significantly increased its Chapter 70 monies. And what Chapter 70 monies are, they're monies that come from the state that are specifically earmarked for, not earmarked, but they're supposedly direct to education. Obviously, we don't have to do that. We usually do. In the last four years, Chapter 70 money has gone up 32%. In fiscal year 19, it was a $24.5 million. This year, it's a $32.5. So significant increases by the state have given additional funding to towns like Milford who face, you know, certain things that we face in this town with our population, and what needs to be done in order to be able to educate them properly costs money. Some of the monetary articles that we're going to talk about tonight, we don't usually adjust, or address, excuse me, capital in the May town meeting. There are certain articles here that we are addressing capital for the reasons of whether it's an emergency or for timing. Article seven is a $60,000 spend for the memorial school roof. The roof is leaking, was leaking, it still is leaking, excuse me. This was proposed last year to try to get done. Unfortunately, because of COVID, we asked the schools if they could back this off a year because of the financial uncertainty that was going on. They agreed to do that, but at this point, the roof is leaking, there's water coming through. It needs to be addressed as soon as possible. Article 13 is a cooling tower for the town hall. This has been on the capital improvement plan for quite a few years. It's gotten to the point now where it's in such disrepair, it's going to cost us about $10,000 just to repair it. Doesn't make financial sense. Therefore, we are recommending the $84,500 to be able to repair the AC at the town hall. It's a smart financial decision, and we hope to see your approval of that. Article 17, the high school science lab. This is for $165,000. This is for Phase Two of the improvements for the science lab. As I had said at the last town meeting, at Phase One, those science labs are the same science labs that I sat in 25 years ago. They need to be updated. They need to stay with the times. One important thing that I mentioned last time is about all the improvements and insurance that we purchased will be transferable. So the question of, oh, whoa, we're going to build a new high school, why do we want to invest? Every bit of this investment will be taken forward to a new high school if, and so if we do do that. And the last article is Article 20. It's for $60,000 for a plow truck to the schools. This currently replaces two vehicles that wouldn't pass inspection, so they are not roadworthy. This one vehicle will be able to do the task of both these vehicles. And also, the plow truck being available for the winter season obviously gives us a huge advantage so that we don't have to, a plow truck that's coming in in February after the storms have already ended. So just to recap quickly, free cash is in a position of about $100,000 when coming into this meeting. Free cash is significantly lower than it usually is because of the circumstances of the last town meeting in which we spent quite a bit of free cash. We have $45,000 for spending on this schedule, which leaves us about $54,000 for the spring town meeting, fall town meeting, excuse me. That's, like I said, that's significantly lower than we usually have, but with things coming out, that number should raise significantly. We have targeted $1.5 million in our budget for capital improvements, as we have in the past. This is to make sure that we address all capital in our town, whether it's roads, vehicles, schools, and that we don't let the capital projects in our town deteriorate to a point where they're more costly. There's a target levy capacity of $4.5 million. Once again, I always like to explain that, but a levy capacity is the amount of difference, the levy capacity is the amount that we are allowed to tax taxpayers of Milford by law. We have $4.5 million underneath that number. That is what we are not spending, even though we could legally spend it. That is $4.5 million of savings to the taxpayers of Milford. This is because of diligent work by the financial team, the selectmen, the town administrator, and the finance committee, and department heads. That is tax savings to you, and that's your change to you as taxpayers. So we're in a very healthy position, but things are tightening up, and certainly with the question of what state funding is going to be in the future, we certainly dictate how our financial outlook looks like. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Morin. Are there any other reports?
Yes, we have Mike Visconti and Terrick Miranda.
Okay, Mr. Visconti.
Yes.
You had your hand raised?
Hello?
Yes, we hear you, Mr. Visconti.
Okay, I said I did not, I don't have a report. I had raised my hand for an earlier issue. That being, on the previous article, there was a total of 100 votes, so I will doubt the quorum. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Visconti has doubted the quorum. Can we have, please have a count of the quorum? Mr. Visconti, we have 139 members present. Evidently, some members did not vote. They abstained, but the practice has been at town meeting that we do not count abstentions. We just count who voted in favor and who voted opposed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Does any other voter, excuse me, are there any other reports? Okay, I think I'll just comment. I thought Mr. Deluzio would be giving his report or a summary report from the town meeting studying the Improvement Committee, but he just wanted to let the members know that the report was in the warrant mailing, and that report is given to town meeting every year according to the standing vote of that committee. What's the pleasure of the meeting? Article two? Oh, Reno now wants to speak. Okay, Mr. Deluzio, I apologize.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Reno Deluzio, Precinct 7, Town Meeting Studying Improvement Committee Chairman. Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, you have received the committee's report with the mailing of the warrant. I'll therefore present an overview and an update since this report was written. During this reporting period, the committee continued to pursue its initiatives despite the challenges brought about by COVID-19 restrictions and the unexpected deaths of Steve Treadle, one of the committee's original members, and Mike Knofree, town moderator. On the committee accomplishments and activities, pre-town meeting forums for two town meetings were canceled due to COVID-19 restrictions. Since this report was written, the committee also canceled a forum for this meeting due to the lateness of the warrant's availability on the town website and other factors. Regarding twice reading of main motions, from time to time, the practice of reading the main motion twice, first by the sponsor of the warrant and again by the moderator, has been questioned by town meeting members. The committee did an extensive study by surveying town meeting videos of 25 towns and found only two that followed this practice, Milford being one of them. Since the writing of this report, main motions were read only once at the January 6, 2021 town meeting. It is my understanding that this and subsequent town meetings will continue this practice. Significant progress has been made in the development of the Town Meeting Procedural Guide, thanks to Moderator Mike Bontempo, formerly the committee's clerk. The initial draft can be found on the town's website in the committee's December 21, 2020 agenda packet. An update is anticipated following this town meeting. The next step is to forward the draft to several reviewers selected by the committee comprised of the town council, town clerk, finance director, attorney Jerry Moody, and several town meeting members. Electronic presentation guidelines, most recent draft, can be found on the town's website in the committee's February 16, 2021 agenda packet. Since this report was written, the draft has been submitted to the IT Department for their review, which will be followed by review from others as selected by the committee. The electronic voting initiative came to a halt with the passing of Steve Treadle, who was the lead person advancing it. However, the committee intends to keep it on the agenda to the extent that time and resources will allow. Regarding graphics to improve presentation of land articles, recently, the committee has begun research into developing requirements for providing town meeting members with graphics that illustrate the location and features of land under consideration for street acceptances, disposition of town-owned land, site plans, et cetera, during presentations at, or preferably in advance of the town meeting. We are pleased to see the Conservation Commission has provided graphics to support their articles for this town meeting and encourage others to do so. Being able to ask questions at town meeting is another issue that the committee is addressing. Since the town meeting is a deliberative assembly and not a question-and-answer forum, our first approach was the establishment of the pre-town meeting forum to provide a venue for town meeting members to ask questions directly to the sponsors of warrant articles. However, the level of town meeting member participation in the three pre-town meeting forums to date has prompted the committee to begin researching how other towns with representative town meetings deal with this issue. In closing, I would like to take this opportunity to make a request. Currently, all eight precincts are represented on the committee. Of the seven applicants on file for consideration to fill a vacancy, none are from Precinct 4, 6, 7, and 8. I encourage members of these four precincts to submit an application to ensure your precinct is represented on the committee going forward. The application is available on the town website. Finally, the committee extends its appreciation for the support and cooperation it has received from Richard Vilani, town administrator, and all town boards, departments, committees, and commissions that it has called upon over this reporting period. Respectfully submitted, Reno Deluzio, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Deluzio. I don't believe there's any other reports, so we'll take up Article Two, which is the Personnel Board. Do we have a spokesperson for the Personnel Board? Mr. Miranda? Yes, hello, Mr. Miranda.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So do I have, do I read the article?
Yes, please read the motion.
Okay, just making sure. I move that the town vote to amend the wage and salary schedule of the Wages-Salaries Administration Plan by establishing new position levels and salary levels as recommended by the Personnel Board for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, as follows.
Mr. Moderator, I move to waive the reading of the article if the text is the same as appears in the warrant.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded to waive the reading of the remainder of the motion if it's exactly as appears in the warrant, that all town meeting members were mailed. Is it exactly the same, Mr. Miranda?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is, exactly the same. Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion to waive the reading of the remainder of the motion. You may now vote yes if you're in favor and no if you are opposed. If you put up the correct motion, Mr. George. So now the question comes upon the motion to waive the reading of the remainder of the motion on Article Two. Vote yes if you're in favor, no if you are opposed. One hundred eleven voting in favor, one opposed. The motion is carried. Any voter care to be heard? Mr. Miranda?
I just want to let everyone know that this is just a 2.5% cost of living and we got that cost of living increase and we got that number from the finance department.
Yes, Mr. Visconti?
They're calling it a 2.5% cost of living increase when the actual cost of living for the past two years increased each year less than 1%. So it's not that I object to the two and a half percent. What I do object to is it being called a cost of living increase. If it was a cost of living increase, it would be a 0.9% increase. So maybe somebody from the Personnel Board can explain to me why they're calling it a 2.5% cost of living increase. Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion. To amend the wage and salary schedule of the Wage and Salary Administration Plan by establishing new position levels and salary levels as recommended by the Personnel Board for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, as printed in the warrant. All those in favor will vote yes and all those opposed will vote no. One hundred nine voting in favor, ten opposed. The motion is carried. Article Three.
Mr. Moderator?
Select Board Member Chairman Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move at the town vote to fix the salary and compensation of all elected officers of the town as provided by section 108 of chapter 41 of the general laws as follows.
Mr. Moderator, I move to waive the reading of the article if the text is the same as it appears in the warrant?
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded to waive the reading of the remainder of the motion if it's exactly as appears in the warrant. Is it exactly the same, Chairman Walsh?
This year, the select board is recommending...
Mr. Chairman Walsh, is the motion the same as it appears in the warrant?
Yes.
Yes, it is. Does any, the Finance Committee, excuse me, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation? Mr. Moran, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Sorry, I was muted, guys. I can't control that, but favorable.
Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Does any voter care to be heard? Chairman Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, this year, the select board is recommending a two and one-half percent salary adjustment for two full-time elected officials, town clerk and highway surveyor, and for all other elected officials. I urge your support on this article.
Can we hold on for Mike one second?
I'm sorry.
Again, my apologies. We're bringing up the motion to waive the reading of the article. Okay? So at this time, the question comes upon the motion to waive the reading of Article Three on the warrant. If you're in favor, please vote yes. If you're opposed, no. Okay. One hundred eighteen in favor, one opposed. The motion is carried. Chairman Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, this year, the select board is recommending a two and one-half percent salary adjustment for two full-time elected officials, town clerk and highway surveyor, and for all other elected officials of the community. I urge your support on this article.
Any other voter care to be heard?
No.
No? If not, then the question comes upon the motion to fix the salary and compensation of all elected officers of the town as provided by section 108 of chapter 41 of the general laws as printed in the warrant. All those in favor will vote yes. All those opposed, no. One hundred seven having voted in favor, eleven opposed. The motion is carried. Article Four. Mr. Moran?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $116,608,847 as may be necessary to defray the expenses for financial year beginning July 1, 2021. The total of $4,272,869 shall be raised from the Seward Enterprise Fund and the further following amounts be transferred from certain line items above to the accounts listed as set forth in the warrant.
Mr. Moderator, if I may offer friendly amendment to that motion made by Chairman Moran?
Thank you, Town Councilbody.
That the town meeting receive the report of the Finance Committee and that the moderator inquire if any voter wishes to consider any items separately. That if any voter so wishes, he or she shall ask the moderator to remove this item from the report, and when this is done, that the town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer where indicated in the report, the amount recommended in the Finance Committee report as amended, and that the meeting shall then consider the items which have been removed from the report by taking up each item individually. Mr. Moderator, Chairman Moran, I offer that in the form of a friendly amendment.
Well, Town Councilbody, if we would, we rather than take it as a friendly amendment, we'll take it as a modification, which would just require the consent of Mr. Moran. Do you consent to that modification?
Absolutely, and I apologize. I did not have the, I apologize, I did not have that prepared. So I absolutely yield to Town Councilbody.
Okay. Can I have a second on? Second? Councilbody, second. Okay, so, motion's been made and seconded that the town meeting receive the report of the Finance Committee and that the moderator inquire if any voter wishes to consider any items separately. That if any voter so wishes, he or she shall ask the moderator to remove this item from the report, and when this is done, that the town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer where indicated in the report, the amount recommended in the Finance Committee report as amended, and that the meeting shall then consider the items which have been removed from the report by taking up each item individually. So I'll now ask any town meeting member if they wish to remove any item from the Finance Committee's budget for discussion or amendment. William Sanborn, Mr. Sanborn?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to set aside under 122 Select Board, general expenses 5,300.
I'm sorry, Mr. Sanborn, what was the department again?
Department Select Board. General expenses, the amount of $19,110.
Okay, I'm sorry, sorry. First of all, the line item.
Line item 5300.
Hold on one second. I'm sorry. Where it says, in the bold lettering, where it says Select Board, the three numbers prior to it.
Uh, 122.
Okay. Okay, I see. 122 and general expenses 5300.
That's correct.
So removing line item 122, 5300, general expenses. Any other voter care to be heard? Harold Rhodes? Mr. Rhodes?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
May I request that School Department 300, line item 5110 be removed?
Okay, School Department, line item 300 dash 5110, Personal Services is removed. Any other voter care to be heard? Okay, if not, the question comes upon the motion to raise and appropriate and transfer where indicated in the report, the amount recommended in the Finance Committee report as amended. At this time, we...
I need to change it to amended, right?
Yes, please. There'll just be a moment while we bring up the new slide.
Is this the amendment or when you did?
No, you just, you just have to... So the question comes, oh, are we ready? Okay, so the question comes upon the motion to raise and appropriate and transfer where indicated in the report, the amount recommended in the Finance Committee report as amended. So at this time, all those in favor will vote yes and the opposed will vote no. One hundred three voting in favor, twelve opposed. The motion is carried. Before we get to the two line items that have been pulled, I believe Mr. Buckley had a question. Okay, I don't know. I'll recognize now Mr. Sanborn.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Sanborn.
Town meeting members, my name is William Sanborn from precinct two. I would like to revise line item 5,300 under general expenses from $19,110 to $20,110. The difference of $1,000 is to be earmarked to fund the cost of the annual beautification cleanup day.
Mr. Sanborn, can you just hold on on the explanation? Mr. Sanborn, can you just hold on on the explanation of what this amount is for? Do we have this in writing somewhere?
No.
No. Mr. Sanborn, could you please somehow, either through an email, send us what you want to do, just in terms of the amount?
Yes.
Then we can write up a motion for that. Thank you. Okay, so the question comes upon the motion to raise and appropriate and transfer where indicated in the report, the amount recommended in the Finance Committee report as amended. So at this time, all those in favor will vote yes, and the opposed will vote no. 103 voting in favor, 12 opposed. The motion is carried. Before we get to the two line items that have been pulled, I believe Mr. Buckley had a
Town meeting members, my name is William Sanborn, from Precinct 2. I would like to revise line item 5300 under General Expenses from $19,110 to $20,110. The difference of $1,000 is to be earmarked to fund the cost of the annual beautification cleanup day.
Mr. Sanborn, can you just hold on on the explanation of what this amount is for? Do we have this in writing somewhere?
No.
No. Can we take a brief recess to get this in writing? Mr. Sanborn, could you please somehow, either through an email, send us what you want to do, just in terms of the amount?
Yes.
Then we can write up a motion for that. Thank you.
Mr. Sanborn, could you please somehow, either through an email, send us what you want to do, just in terms of the amount?
Yes.
Then we can write up a motion for that. Thank you. Mr. Sanborn, could you please somehow, either through an email, send us what you want to do, just in terms of the amount?
Yes.
Then we can write up a motion for that. Thank you. At this time, the vote is to, the town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer the amount of $19,110 to line item 122-5300, General Expenses, in the amount of $19,110 back into the budget.
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to raise and appropriate and transfer the amount of Okay, at this time, the vote is to, the town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer the amount of $19,110 to line item 122-5300, General Expenses of the Select Board. All those in favor will vote yes, all those opposed, no. The motion is carried. Now we'll take up line item 300-5110, Personal Services. Mr. Rhodes?
Mr. Moderator, have you received my email or text message with the amount?
No, I did not, Mr. Rhodes.
Chris, can you just check? Otherwise, I'll read it to you. Mr. Moderator, I note that we adjust the amount of money shown for the proposed budget for fiscal year 2022 for line item 300, School Department, 5110, from the amount as stated, $55,975.378, to the amount $55,247,000. That would be $55,247,000.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I will second that motion, but I actually had a different question. If we run it to this issue where there's an amendment...
Mr. Beesla?
Can I make the motion that we pass over, that we table the motion, and then continue until we're ready to vote? Thank you.
Mr. Beesla, all I got was that you second the motion.
Okay, I'll leave it at second the motion, then, yes.
Okay, then we'll get back to...
Yeah, that's fine.
So the motion's been made and seconded to reduce...
See, that was an automatic, a very obvious...
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
Could you clarify the question? I heard $55,247,000. Those were the words I heard.
Motion's been made and seconded to reduce line item 300-5110, School Department, Personal Services, in the amount of $728,378, so that the total amount for that line item shall Is that the correct motion, Mr. Rhodes, as I read it?
Mr. Moderator, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. Does any voter care to be heard on the motion? Mr. Rhodes?
Mr. Moderator, Harold Rhodes, Precinct 2. Members of the town meeting, the most important topic we discuss at the May Town Meeting is the budget for the community, and it deserves the attention that it is due. It is the single largest decision we make and affords all the consequent policy decisions. So I hope that it will not be too much. If we just take a few minutes and talk about this particular budget line item, I just ask your indulgence. First of all, this line item increase of approximately $3.3 million, or 6.3%, represents the largest total dollar amount spent by our community, and as such, makes the biggest impact on our taxes and what other programs we can't do. do. So where there is ever an opportunity to take a closer look at the, at the budget in this particular line item, does us all well because of the opportunity cost of this money. This is, this is significant. The first thing I'll say is, even with the finance chairman's, finance chairman's discussion, nowhere has there been a justification presented for the three point three billion dollars. We heard only vague com- comments made about English-speaking and English-language learners, SED, and others. We didn't really get any detail. We really haven't the opportunity to even question the accuracy or the basis on which this important, large number has been calculated. I think it's incumbent upon the finance committee or the school committee to present to the town meeting why this is the exact dollar amount that is the minimum needed. My second point is, as Attorney Body just mentioned, this is a tight budget. Or let's just say it's a thousand dollars. So if another topic comes up later on, in fact, to spend money, we don't be prohibited from even considering any other topic, just because we voted a budget at the beginning to spend all the money we already have. And that seems a bit challenging to all of us, at least to me as a member of Town Meeting, to already be precluded from considering other topics for money to be spent when we've already decided. And in that case, to lower the number now, and perhaps, if there are other items to be needed, we would have the money then to spend on it. And of course, in October, if we didn't need this money, this amount of money could, it could then be restored to the school committee, I mean, to the school department. Not as though they actually need this extra seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars right now, they're gonna continue business as is. My next point is, how did I actually come up with the number fifty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-seven? Well, that is the exact same percentage increase as was given last year over the year previous, of four point seven percent. And that seemed, even last year, there were concerns about the significance of that number of being four point seven percent. So it is my hope, my belief, that we can, you know, not just pass the school budget or any budget, just because it's there, but take some time to actually consider what are the ramifications of doing such? And isn't there a way right now to keep it to be at four point seven percent with the provision that in October, we can restore the rest of the money? Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Any other voter care to be heard? Uh, Mrs. Hornberger? Chairwoman of the school committee.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Moderator. The school committee has worked diligently to develop a budget that supports all of our students and families, and utilizes the significant increases in state aid that our town has been granted to support our schools via the Student Opportunity Act. For months, we have worked productively with the Education Subcommittee of the Finance Committee, and also the Finance Committee, who has favorably approved this budget. The proposed budget you have before you was two years in the making, as we did not move any requests forward last year. There are key initiatives in this budget, primarily personnel, to support our students. These include approximately twenty-two teachers, a career counselor at the high school, and the introduction of a STEM program at our elementary schools. I would be most appreciative of Town Meeting's support of this budget. Thank you.
Does any other voter care to be heard? Mr. Visconti?
Unmute, yes, Mr. Moderator, thank you. We, we live in a time when everybody has to tighten their belts here, okay? And yet, the school committee routinely awards contracts worth many thousands of dollars without any kind of competitive bidding, whether it's required or not. I would not do that, you would not do that. I support this motion wholeheartedly, and we need to send a message to the school committee that they do, need to be more responsible for spending the taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard? Mr. Morin?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, appreciate it. Um, the previous speaker, who I have the utmost respect for and, and love that he delves into this stuff, um, he's a benefit to this town for what he does. But in this particular case, as you have noticed, the state has significantly increased chapter seventy money. That is money that's specifically supposed to be directed toward the schools. You've seen enrollment has gone up, you've seen that the population of our schools has changed, and that involves investment. And in this particular case, like I said, a thirty-two percent increase in, in, in funding from the state for, for, for chapter seventy. Um, I don't feel right, as a taxpayer and a parent, of saying that the state has said that we will give you a thirty-two percent increase over the last four years, and we're gonna take that money and we're gonna pave roads with it. I don't think that that's the right thing to do. I think it's a fantastic idea to question it, and to the previous speaker, I apologize because I can't do my usual, uh, presentation of, of, of the funding, which I usually like to delve into, um, and I would be more than happy to at this time. Um, but honestly, a, under the finance committees, uh, in the Subcommittee for Education's experience with the current budget, um, because that they passed over so many things last year, I do understand that this increase is large, but it's almost two years' worth of initiatives, um, so, and I forgot, I should have highlighted that earlier, and I do apologize, but because they passed over so many things last year, it does almost seem like they're doubling up this year. Um, and we will be diligent to make sure that this increase won't happen next year, but we were trying to make up for last year. And like I said, the previous speaker, uh, his analysis is always great, but I just wanted to give my two cents on that. Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
Any other voter care to be heard?
Mr. Moderator?
Uh, Mr. Leprad?
Oh, sorry, um, uh, hello, Mr. Moderator, Thomas Leprad from precinct eight, rising to give the perspective of a actively enrolled student in Milford High School. Uh, while I, I don't have any direct experience with either-
Brad, hold on, hold on one second, are, are you a registered voter in the town of Milford?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is he? Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead. I apologize.
It's okay, uh, so, in my experience, uh, over the past four years at Milford High School, I, I have seen, I, I have a decent understanding of what these programs currently have, uh, in comparison to similar programs of other towns. And there are several key things writ, uh, in the proposal that we currently don't have, especially when it comes to SED education. Uh, so, just based on that, I personally think that our current system is a little bit behind a lot of other towns in the area, and I think this money would, uh, do well to go to this, uh, well, it would be good for us to support this article.
Any other voter care to be heard?
Mr. Moderator, I move the question.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to move the question, which is an attempt to shut off debate, it's not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds vote. So the question comes upon the motion to move the previous question, all those in favor will manifest by voting yes, all those opposed, no. One hundred and three having voted in favor, seventeen opposed. The two-thirds has been acquired, the motion is carried. So the question comes upon the motion. The town reduce, excuse me, the town vote to reduce line item three zero zero dash five one one zero, school department budget, personal services, in the amount of seven hundred twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars, so that the personal services line item shall be fifty-five million, two hundred and forty-seven thousand. Thirty-three having voted in favor, eighty-six opposed. The motion is defeated. So I'll need a motion to put, uh, line item three zero zero five one one zero, personal services, in the amount of fifty-five million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars back into the budget. So do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to raise and appropriate and transfer the amount of fifty-five million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars, to, uh, line item three zero zero dash five ones, one zero, personal services, school department. Does any voter care to be heard in the motion? Mr. Buckley?
Uh, can you hear me now? Uh, the question I had is, what is the SOAR Enterprise Fund? I don't see that in any of the paperwork I was looking at.
Uh, that's not the question before us right now, uh, if you can hold on till after this vote, we'll get to that. Uh, so any other care to be heard on the motion to put the, uh, fifty-five million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars back into the school department budget? If not, the question comes upon the motion, all those in favor will vote yes, all those opposed, no. One hundred and six voting in favor, fourteen opposed, the motion is carried. Uh, Mr. Buckley had a question. Mr. Buckley?
Yes, I did, uh, the question I had, well, the motion that was up there was about, uh, taking money from the SOAR Enterprise Fund, and I can't find what that is.
Does any voter care to be heard on that? Mr. Morin?
Uh, it was article four, it was, it was on the screen a minute ago. I'm not sure, did you guys hear me?
Yes, we hear you, but, uh, I, I, are you, are you looking for, I don't know exactly what you're looking for, Mr. Buckley.
Uh, it was, the article four that was on there said they were gonna transfer money or raise money from the SOAR Enterprise Fund. I just did, don't know what that fund is, I would look through different paperwork here and wasn't sure what the SOAR Enterprise Fund is, that it's able to raise that kind of money.
Moderator?
Yes?
The SOAR Enterprise Fund is of, the fund under which the Sewer Department or the Sewer Commission operates. Basically, it's paying for the expenses of sewer through the rates charged to the users. It, it has nothing to do with the school department.
Okay, I, well, my question was based on the motion that was on the screen at the time, so-
Yes, and I, I understand that, that was, uh, just a technical difficulty that we experienced placing up there a motion that was not the motion that was before the board.
Okay.
Apologize to that, Mr. Buckley.
Thank you.
We do.
Yes, Mr. Beeslaw?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, this is more of a point of order, if we have another motion similar to what we just had for article four, I suggest that the current article be tabled until the paperwork can be created to present to Town Meeting on the screen, and we keep on working through the articles. When the group is ready to present the articles, we can then go back and untable that specific article again, which is a way to keep the all meeting moving. Table one article if they have to pay attention to create their own separate, um, voting items. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Beeslaw. Article five.
Mr. Moderator?
Selecting Attorney O'Lawler.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote is followed to enact certain measures set forth here, representing each year to the annual town meeting. As the town vote overrides the town charter.
Moderator, would you please add that statement here, Mr. Beeslaw?
Motion's been made and seconded, it's a way of the reading of the remainder of the motion, exactly as appears in the warrant, that all Town Meeting members were male. Is it exactly the same?
Yes, Mr. Beeslaw.
It is exactly the same. It is exactly the same. Any vote okay to be heard on the motion to waive the reading of the remainder of the motion? If not, the question comes upon the motion to waive the reading. So the question comes upon the motion to waive the reading of the motion for article five. All those in favor will vote yes. All those opposed, no. One hundred and six voting in favor, one opposed. The motion is carried. Does the finance committee have a recommendation? Mr. Moran?
Favorable.
Finance committee recommendation is favorable. Any vote okay to be heard? Selectman O'Laughlin?
Mr. Moderator, the intent of this article is to combine what here to full with seven separate votes at the annual town meeting, which are operational matters, to include short-term borrowing. The board of selectmen will handle legal affairs, processing of parking violations. The treasurer collector has the ability to deal with compensating balancing agreements with financial institutions, that amounts of funds received from insurance companies can be applied against losses incurred by the town, contracting up to five years. And lastly, that the treasurer can process the collection of taxes in instances where taxpayer is in arrears by allowing them to present their deed rather than go through the process of the court foreclosure system. I would recommend favorable vote on this matter, which are operational matters.
Any other vote okay to be heard? I'd just like to remind the town meeting members that respect to measure A, pursuant to Mass General Laws, chapter forty-four, section eight, authorization for the town treasurer with the approval of the select board to borrow money and issue a note or notes, and to renew any note or notes in anticipation of revenues requires a two-thirds vote. So the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor? The vote yes. All those opposed, no. One hundred and six voting in favor, three opposed. Motion's carried. The necessary two-thirds has been acquired for measure A. Article six.
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, good evening. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of forty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be utilized to fund the cost items contained within a collective bargaining agreement between the town of Milford and the Milford Highway Department Union, including but not limited to wages and salaries by transferring thirty thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars of said sum to the highway department's personnel service budget, line item number four, two, one, five, one, one, zero, and fourteen thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars of said sum to the parks department personnel service budget, line item number six, five, zero, five, one, one, zero, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded that the town vote to transfer the sum of forty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said some to be utilized to fund the cost items contained within a collective bargaining agreement between the town of Milford and the Milford Highway Department Union, including but not limited to wages and salaries by transferring thirty thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars of said sum to the highway department personnel services budget, line item number four, two, one, dash, five, one, one, zero, and fourteen thousand, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars of said sum to the parks personnel services budget, line item number six, five, dash, five, one, one, zero. Does the finance committee have a recommendation? Mr. Moran?
Favorable.
Finance committee recommendation is favorable. Any vote okay to be heard?
Mr. Moderator? This article seeks to fund the cost of items contained in a collective bargaining agreement between the town of Milford and the highway union. The additional cost is forty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, and I urge the support from the town meeting members for this article.
Any other vote okay to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will vote yes. All those opposed, no. One hundred and ten voting in favor, five opposed. The motion is carried. Article seven. Mrs. Hornberger.
Great, thank you. I moved at the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of sixty thousand dollars, said some to be spent on the jurisdiction of the Milford School Committee for the purpose of replacing and disposal of the memorial school roof over the existing library.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of sixty thousand dollars, said some to be spent on the jurisdiction of the Milford School Committee for the purpose of replacing and disposal of the memorial school roof over existing libraries. Does the finance committee have a recommendation? Mr. Moran?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote okay to be heard? Mrs. Hornberger?
Great, thank you. So the current roof is leaking over the library, just a portion of the building. The roof was installed in nineteen ninety-five and the shingles have been leaking over the past three years, which we have been repairing. We're requesting funding to replace the roof, which is now out of warranty. We had planned to ask last fall, but deferred the request when asked, and would like to obtain the funds at this time so we can replace the roof over the summer when school is not in session. And we appreciate your support to keep our students and staff dry. Thank you.
Any other vote okay to be heard?
I have Michael Visconti.
Mr. Visconti?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, I have tried for the past year and a half to obtain a copy of the preventive maintenance plan for our school district, only to find out after a year and a half that there is no preventive maintenance plan scheduled for our school buildings or sites. This to me is unacceptable and the taxpayers of the town should be outraged. We should not spend another dime of taxpayers' money on any kind of capital improvement for our schools until there is a legitimate preventive maintenance plan in place to protect our investment. We can't just put roofs on and then do nothing to them and expect them to last forever. This is outrageous request. I ask you to vote no on this article. Thank you.
Any other vote okay to be heard? Mr. Moran?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. With all due respect to the previous speaker, that's a completely different issue that I'm not saying is a wrong question or a right question. The point is, this issue was brought up last year during COVID. We asked them to deal with a leaky roof in which water is dripping into the library with all their books, and we asked them to do us a favor and please put it off for another year because of the questionable funding from the state. This is something that needs to be addressed. We have water coming into the library. Like I said, they asked for it last year. We asked them because of COVID, please, is there any way we can put it off? And they happily did that. We're at a point right now where financially we can afford this, and like I said, water can't be pouring into our schools. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Any other vote okay to be heard? Mr. Visconti?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, in my business, I have repaired hundreds of leaky roofs without replacing the entire roof. I would like to know from the school department how many attempts have been made from legitimate professional roofing companies to repair the several leaks that might be in that roof and when they were done. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
Move the question.
Motion's been made to move the previous question. It's not debatable. It requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of moving the previous question will vote yes. All those opposed, no. One hundred and one voting in favor, eighteen opposed. Necessary two-thirds has been acquired. The motion is carried. So now the question comes upon the motion that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of sixty thousand dollars, said some to be spent on the jurisdiction of the Milford School Committee for the purpose of replacing and disposal of the memorial school roof over existing library. All those in favor will vote yes. All those opposed, no. One hundred and eighteen voting in favor, one opposed. The motion is carried. Article eight. Mr. Peller?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I moved at the town vote to accept Massachusetts General Law, chapter sixty, section fifty-seven A and chapter forty-four, section sixty-nine, which imposes a penalty when an insufficient funds check is tendered to the treasurer or collector to pay local taxes, fees, or other charges. Said penalty to also apply to electronic payments, with appeals to be made to the treasurer.
Motion's been made and seconded with the town vote to accept Mass General Laws, chapter sixty, section fifty-seven A and chapter forty-four, section sixty-nine, which imposes a penalty when an insufficient funds check is tendered to the treasurer or collector to pay local taxes, fees, or other charges. Said penalty to also apply to electronic payments, which with appeals to be made to the treasurer.
For the recognized second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the finance committee have a recommendation? Mr. Moran?
Do you have me?
Yes.
Oh, I apologize. Yes, favorable.
Finance committee recommendation is favorable. Any vote okay to be heard? Mr. Peller?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This article is to accept the Massachusetts General Law, which imposes a penalty when an insufficient funds check is tendered. Since two thousand and nineteen, the town has received a hundred and twenty insufficient fund checks amounting to thirty-four thousand, five hundred and six dollars. Approximately twenty percent of those checks have been repeat offenders. This article will allow the town to collect a fee for the insufficient check. The fee which is set forth by this article is one percent of the value of the check for a minimum of twenty-five dollars and will allow for an appeal process of the fee. If this article passes, my office, the treasurer's office, will issue a new not sufficient funds check policy and will also have a stricter tracking and recovery policy. I ask for your support on this article. Thank you.
Any other vote okay to be heard?
Mr. Moderator?
Attorney Boddy, town council.
Mr. Moderator, very briefly, this is a burden on the town and those taxpayers who don't issue checks for which there were insufficient funds. This is an ongoing problem for the town. As I said, it's disadvantageous, but in addition, there are administrative costs with, in terms of the town's staff processing these checks. We need to get this in check, no pun intended, so that it's fair and equitable to all the taxpayers. And it really is only putting the costs of an NSF check on the person, the burden on the person who issued it in the first place. To me, it's very equitable and it's fair to, as I said, all the taxpayers who pay their taxes with good checks. to, as I said, all the taxpayers who pay their taxes with good checks.
Any other vote of care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will vote yes. All those opposed, no. One hundred and one voting in favor. None opposed. The motion is carried. Article nine.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article nine?
Second.
Motion's been made seconded with the town vote to pass over Article nine. Motion to pass over. Is an attempt to take no action on the article that was inserted in the warrant. It is debatable. Does any vote of care to be heard on the motion to pass over?
No one. Wait, David Consigli.
Mr. Consigli?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. County meeting members, yes, we are going to be passing over Article nine and also Article ten. We have been sitting with the four subcommittees of the Finance Committee, which has been very productive and helpful, and we will continue to do that. That's why we're passing it over as we continue to work with the subcommittee. Thank you.
Any other vote of care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over Article nine. All those in favor will vote yes. All those opposed, no. One hundred eighteen voting in favor. None opposed. Motion is carried unanimously. Article ten.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article ten?
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to pass over Article ten. Again, it's an attempt to take no action on an article that was inserted in the warrant. Does any vote of care to be heard on the motion to pass over? Mr. Consigli?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, county meeting members, David Consigli, Chairman of Countryside Healthcare and the Geriatric Authority. Again, same as Article nine, we will continue our meetings with the Subcommittee and the Finance Committee, and we will be back shortly. Thank you.
Any other vote of care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over. Article ten. All those in favor will vote yes. All those opposed, no. One hundred thirteen voting in favors. None opposed. The motion is carried unanimously. Article eleven, I believe, is Mr. Noel Bontempo. Mr. Bontempo?
Sorry, apparently I was muted. I'm Noel Bontempo, Conservation Commission and Precinct Seven. I move that the town vote pursuant to General Law, Chapter forty, Section fifteen, to transfer the care, custody, and jurisdiction of the following town-owned parcel, totaling 0.78 acres, to the Milford Conservation Commission. Assessors map thirty-seven, block zero, lot four, acres 0.78. The purpose thereof being to preserve said parcel located off of Upper West Street for stormwater management, wetlands, and open space protection and conservation purposes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded with the town vote pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty, Section fifteen, to transfer the care, custody, and jurisdiction of the following town-owned parcel totaling 0.78 acres to the Milford Conservation Commission. Assessors map thirty-seven, block zero, lot four, area 0.78 acres. The purpose being to preserve said parcel located off Upper West Street for stormwater management, wetlands, and open space protection and conservation purposes. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation? Mr. Morin?
Favorable.
Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any vote of care to be heard? Mr. Bontempo?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article eleven proposes to transfer the listed town-owned parcel to Conservation Commission jurisdiction for stormwater management, open space protection, and conservation purposes. This 0.78-acre triangular parcel is located in the Mill River watershed at the Milford-Holddale Town Line and has 300 feet of frontage along West Street. The lot is severely constrained by excessive ledge as well as steep slopes, having a 40-foot grade change across the property with portions of the lot being within the Mill River floodplain and floodway and adjacent to wetlands associated with the river. Given its location, this parcel may be suitable for additional stormwater best management practices associated with mitigating runoff from West Street into the Mill River. I urge you to support this article.
Does any other vote of care to be heard?
No, not at this time.
If not, the question comes upon the motion. Before I get to the motion, I just want to remind the voters that pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty, Section fifteen, that the transfer of a town-owned parcel of land requires a two-thirds vote. So at this time, put the question, which is the question that the town vote pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty, Section fifteen, to transfer the care, custody, and jurisdiction of the following town-owned parcel totaling 0.78 acres to the Milford Conservation Commission. Assessors map thirty-seven, block zero, lot four, area 0.78 acres. The purpose being to preserve said parcel located off Upper West Street for stormwater management, wetlands, and open space protection and conservation purposes. All those in favor will vote yes. All those opposed, no. One hundred fourteen voting in favor, five opposed. The motion is carried, and the necessary two-thirds vote has been acquired. Article twelve. Mrs. Hornberger?
I move that the town vote to authorize the expenditure of the available balance in Fund 2696 Comcast Verizon PEG Access under the jurisdiction of the school committee for the purpose of performing upgrades in accordance with the PEG Access Agreement.
Do I have a second? Moved and seconded that the town vote to authorize the expenditure of the available balance in Fund 2696 Comcast Verizon PEG Access under the jurisdiction of the school committee for the purpose of performing upgrades in accordance with the PEG Access Agreement. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation? Mr. Morin?
Favorable.
Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any vote of care to be heard? Mrs. Hornberger?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article seeks to allow expenditure prospectively for the funds that will be received in FY '22, and therefore, we do not have an exact amount at this time. This Reserve for Appropriation Fund receives quarterly funding from both Verizon and Comcast derived from the access charges on the monthly bills of all Milford residents. It is anticipated these funds will be approximately $55,000 for the year. The funds are used to support the network infrastructure and audiovisual upgrades at the high school and around school grounds, which hosts Milford TV cable programming, including school events, athletics, and school committee meetings, the importance of which we have all come to appreciate in these days of virtual meetings and limited attendance at events. We appreciate your support. Thank you.
Any other vote of care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manif-- excuse me, will vote yes. All those opposed, no. One hundred fourteen voting in favor to oppose. The motion is carried. Article thirteen. Attorney O'Laughlin?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $84,500 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Select Board for the purpose of replacing the town hall cooling tower or take any other action relative thereto.
Do I have a second? Motion's been made and seconded that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $84,500, said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Select Board for the purpose of replacing the town hall cooling tower. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation? Mr. Morin?
Favorable.
Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any vote of care to be heard? Attorney O'Laughlin?
Mr. Moderator, this article seeks to appropriate the sum of $84,500 to replace the town hall cooling tower. The existing cooling tower system is currently broken and not functioning. The project was actually scheduled for this upcoming Fall Town Meeting. To make repairs at this point in time, only to go and replace it later in October, it's an undue cost of the town. Given that it's not working at all, it makes sense to appropriate the funds now and put the new system in place. I would urge your support of this article.
Any other vote of care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion to vote-- the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $84,500, said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Select Board for the purpose of replacing the town hall cooling tower. All those in favor will vote yes. All those opposed, no. One hundred fifteen voting in favor. Three opposed. The motion is carried. Article fourteen. I believe maybe Mr. Miranda on the Personnel Board.
Hello, thank you. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $40,000, said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Personnel Board to make current the existing six-year-old classification and compensation plan. Detailed explanation to follow.
Do I have a second? Motion's been made and seconded that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $40,000, said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Personnel Board to make current the existing six-year-old classification and compensation plan. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation? Mr. Morin?
The recommendation from the Finance Committee is to pass it over.
The recommendation of the Finance Committee is to pass over Article fourteen. Does any vote of care to be heard? Mr. Miranda?
Oh, oh. I don't think this is the time to pass this over, Mr. Moderator. This is an important article because it will fix the current inequities that we have in our current compensation plan. It has the support of the Personnel Board, the HR Director, the Town Administrator, and Select Board. The project will take about one year to complete, and by the completion of the project, we'll have a new compensation plan set in place to be voted on at next year's town meeting.
Does any other vote of care to be heard? Town Council Boddy?
If I may, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, Town Meeting members. Just as background for this, we know that we see regular recourse to the Personnel Board because classifications seem to be skewed. This proposal came forward as a way to address inequities within the classification system that are being addressed regularly on a piecemeal basis. Not to reiterate too much what I said previously with regard to NSF funds. However, there are administrative costs with all these actions. And repeating these actions over and over again instead of addressing the systemic problems is not a wise use of our resources. In addition, what we have noted by reviewing this is that there is some risk avoidance here by addressing these now. For example, if someone were to challenge the classifications in a court of law, and we had these updated and reviewed, and we acted upon whatever recommendations, either to accept them or to reject them, we would be then able to counter, in our defense, that we have actually and recently fully reviewed and investigated this, and the classifications are in keeping with other communities and with the standards in the industry. We would be hiring experts to come in and do this. I would like to also remind the Town Meeting members that this is merely a study. This does not mean that the classifications will change, and it doesn't mean that the recommendations will all be ones that we will find palatable. We will be able to look at these, consider these, and make a recommendation to the full town meeting once this comes back before the meeting. A final thing I would like to say is, when this appeared originally before the Personnel Board, it was greeted with, "Well, why do we want to spend the money on this?" That first plan, or the last plan that we did, was wrong. The minute it got out the gate, The minute it got out the gate, we knew that at the time. And my response to that remains what it was then, which is, if we knew it was wrong then, why do we somehow think we should be satisfied with it? The town and the town's employees need the best, fairest, most equitable classification plan, but more important than all of those things, the town and its employees needs the most defensible plan. We need armor to shield us against spurious claims. We also need to make sure that what we're doing is right, and if we want to attract and retain the best talent possible for the community, engaging an outside consultant to give us advice and make recommendations through a classification plan is the way to go. It is the best, in the best interest of the town, and it may in fact avert litigation down the road, avert problems down the road, avert wasted administrative time and costs and expenses. I would encourage the town meeting to support this for purposes of moving forward, to hire an expert consultant in the field, and to come back and looking at what we have and make recommendations as to where it is not equitable, where it is not working, because frankly, internally, we already recognize, we have it at a public meeting, we recognize the system is flawed. How on earth will we defend ourselves when our opponents bring up our own recognition that this is a bad system? This will, we hope, fix the system. If it doesn't fix the system, it's a step in the right direction, and it's a move forward for the town. Again, I encourage you to give it due consideration, and then even more than that, I encourage you to support it. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Jody Nocilia?
Good evening. I'd like to reiterate what town council has said, and also add to that as a professional in the human resources field for over thirty-five years and a member of the personnel board, I'd like to go over some points that I think are really impactful as to why this needs to occur. So as was mentioned, the last study in pay plan was put into place in 2015. As a general rule, employers should examine the overall compensation structure at least every three to five years. Doing so helps to determine whether the structure is still aligned with the labor market and needs of the organization. The personnel board is tasked, under its bylaws, with reviewing the pay plan on a regular basis, and has been discussing this topic for at least a year and a half. In addition, a review should be done each year of the salary structure to adjust the minimum midpoint and maximum of each pay grade level to the market. This is already a part of the bylaws, and also has not been done since 2015. As a result of this, there are a significant number of requests for exception to salaries. A very important point to note is that the majority of Article II employees will reach the maximum of their salary range within the next two years. This means that in future years, these town employees will not be able to receive an increase. It is also important to note that as a result of the proposed study, the only time a salary change would have to be implemented outside of the normal annual review cycle is if an employee falls below the minimum of a corrected range. As town council mentioned, the Massachusetts Equal Pay Act, passed into law into 2018, as well as the Fair Labor Standards Act, which classifies employees as exempt and non-exempt, have both put us into a difficult position because we know that there are jobs categorized incorrectly. When the last study was implemented, the number of pay grades was also scaled down from eight to five. This compressing of grades is an outdated philosophy, which has led to these requests for salary and grade adjustments to be brought to the personnel board much too frequently. And unfortunately, this is becoming the norm due to this poor classification system. As was mentioned, this threatens both the retention of current employees and the recruitment efforts for new employees. Current equity with external salaries is randomly investigated, creating inconsistencies among employees and concerns for the mass pay equity law, which protects people of both genders from being paid equally for doing equal work. The job descriptions are sorely in need of being updated, and in order to save the town money, myself as well as the HR director have offered to work on updating all of the job descriptions, which would need to happen first. The other concern that the compensation initiative will address is that the positions that are being correctly classified as either exempt or non-exempt from overtime pay, and we are specifically aware that some jobs are misclassified currently. So the end result of the study would be that a compensation philosophy, guidelines, and pay practices would be developed that would work within the salary ranges that would be up to date and driven by the local market to ensure that the town is in compliance with both state and federal laws. Thank you.
Does any other vote to care to be heard?
The original plan adopted by the personnel board was to review the classifications over a three-year period, with a third being reviewed and adjusted each year. Maybe, can somebody from the personnel board tell me why that plan was abandoned? Also, six years ago, all job descriptions were in the process of being updated and due to be completed within one year. Can someone from the personnel board tell me if those descriptions were updated, and if not, why not? Also, the grade step plan was compressed, as indicated by the previous speaker, for a specific reason. The personnel board fought hard at town meeting to get the new-- to establish the new grade and step plan in lieu of the annual automatic unmerited two percent raise. They argued that this was the wave of the future, and that this new grade and step plan would carry us well into the future. Can somebody from the personnel board now tell me why they have abandoned this plan and have violated town meeting vote in doing so? Thank you.
Does any vote to care to be heard on Mr. Visconti's questions? Mr. Miranda?
Yes, I-- most of the board wasn't on the personnel board when this pros-- when this review was done, so I cannot answer to why the process is not in place today, because when I was appointed to the personnel board in 2018, we were still going over job descriptions. So that one-year timeframe that they had set was never met, and I-- I cannot give Mr. Visconti the answers he wants, because I wasn't there for them, and I do not know the answer to them. That's-- that's on the past members of the personnel board.
Does any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Visconti?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The per-- there is never a complete turnover of all personnel board members. There has to be at least several members currently on the personnel board that were on the personnel board when all of the items I mentioned were adopted. I move that we pass over this article until the previous speaker can get intel from the current personnel board members who were board members at the time, and then come back to town meeting. Thank you.
Okay.
My honor, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Attorneybody?
There is a motion pending on the floor. Mr. Visconti seeks to introduce an additional motion. That motion cannot be introduced while there's a motion pending before the town meeting, excuse me.
Point well taken, Attorneybody. Does any other vote to care to be heard? Kristin Malpegnano, Human Resources Director?
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. With regard to the last question from the previous caller, I can't-- I just got here in October, and I can't speak exactly to what happened on the previous personnel board, but I can tell you what I am looking at and what we're dealing with. So, I wish it was more relevant, but it doesn't seem to be. The job descriptions that we have are not well done. They're very out of date. They must be addressed regardless, but more important, I think we need to move forward on this because we've taken care of the unions, they have their contracts signed, but the Article II employees are the forgotten lot in this. They-- there are issues relating to this compensation plan that we're working with, as Mr. Body pointed out, are significant, with gender equity, with how flawed the previous study was, the confusion that there was with it, and we need to address this now. It's an important issue on all the levels that Ms. Nocilia brought up. It's not something that we can put off, and all we can do is work with what we have now and move forward with it in terms of upgrading the job descriptions and, you know, making everything current. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Delmore?
Like to move the question, please?
Motion's been made and seconded to move the previous question. It's attempted cutoff debate. It's not debatable. Let's move the previous question. All those in favor of moving the previous question will vote yes. One hundred voting in favor, fourteen opposed. Two-thirds is acquired. The motion is carried. Now the question comes upon the motion. Does the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty thousand dollars, said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the personnel board to make current the existing six-year-old classification and compensation plan? All those in favor will vote yes. Eighty-one having voted in favor, thirty-eight opposed. The motion is carried. Article fifteen. It's the planning board. I'm not sure who's presenting that. Mr. Cannelli?
I move that the town vote to amend Article Four definitions of the zoning bylaw relating to massage parlor uses, as noted herein after, by substituting in section four point one definitions the term massage parlor for the term massage establishment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded that the town vote to amend Article Four definitions of the zoning bylaw relating to massage parlor uses, as noted herein after, by substituting in section four point one definitions the term massage parlor for the term massage establishment. Does the finance committee have a recommendation? Mr. Moran?
You first, sponsor.
Finance committee recommendation is referred to sponsor. Does the planning board have a report? Mr. Cannelli?
Pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter Forty-Eight, Section Five, the planning board on May fourth, 2021 remotely conducted a duly posted and noticed public hearing regarding the subject of Article Fifteen, at which time the planning board voted to make a favorable recommendation to town meeting. Article Fifteen in the May twenty-four, 2021 Annual Town Meeting Warrant is a housekeeping article sponsored by the planning board. It will correct an error in Article Twenty-Seven of the January sixth, 2021 Special Town Meeting that was only discovered after the town meeting had concluded. The error occurred in the wording of both Article Twenty-Seven and the adopting motion, and resulted in the name of the principal use massage parlor erroneously being printed as masta-- excuse me, massage establishment. Article two point three Use Regulation Schedule of the zoning bylaw lists massage parlor as a principal use and prohibits it in all zoning districts. However, there is no mention of massage establishment in the Use Regulation Schedule or elsewhere in the zoning bylaw, except for the new definition mentioned above. The planning board intends-- intent has been to properly clarify the section four point one definition of massage parlor in the zoning bylaw, not to rename the use that is listed in section two point three. As currently proposed, Article Fifteen will correct that error while retaining the new definition. This will clearly de-- uh, permit licensing practitioners from illicit massage parlors, the latter of which will remain prohibited in all zoning districts within the town. The planning board urges your support of Article Fifteen. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will vote yes. One hundred five-- oh, I apologize, I forgot to mention that pursuant to Mass General Law-- oh, sorry, wrong thing. Yes, I'm sorry, yeah. Pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter Forty-Eight, Section Five, a change to the zoning bylaw requires a two-thirds vote. One hundred and five having voted in affirmative for-- A hundred and five having voted in affirmative for opposed. The motion is carried and the two-thirds requirement has been achieved. Article sixteen, I believe is Noel Bontempo.
Noel Bontempo, Conservation Commission and Precinct seven. I move that the town vote pursuant to General Law Chapter forty, Section fifteen, to transfer the care, custody, and jurisdiction of the following two town-owned parcels, totaling eleven point three-three acres to the Milford Conservation Commission. Assessors map thirty-seven, block zero, lot eleven. Area ten point zero seven acres. And assessors map thirty-eight, block zero, lot five. Area one point two-six acres. For the purpose being to preserve said parcels located off of Upper West Street for conservation and recreation purposes, storm water management, wetlands, and open space protection as recommended in the Milford Comprehensive Plan or to take any other action in relation thereto.
Do I have a second? Motion's been made and seconded that the town vote pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter forty, Section fifteen, to transfer the care, custody, and jurisdiction of the following two town-owned parcels totaling eleven point three-three acres to the Milford Conservation Commission. Assessors map thirty-seven, block zero, lots eleven. Area ten point zero seven acres. Assessors map thirty-eight, block zero, lots five. Area one point two-six acres. The purpose being to preserve said parcels located off of Upper West Street for conservation and recreation purposes, storm water management, wetlands, and open space protection as recommended in the Milford Comprehensive Plan. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation? Mr. Moran?
You're first sponsor.
Finance Committee recommendation is referred to sponsor. Any vote to care to be heard? Mr. Bontempo?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article would transfer the two town-owned parcels to Conservation Commission jurisdiction. Doing so will preserve the parcels for conservation and recreation purposes, storm water management, wetlands, and open space protection as recommended in the Milford Comprehensive Plan. These two tax titled parcels are in the Mill River watershed and are located on Upper West Street across from Plains Automotive and the Humane Society. Given their location and having over one thousand feet of frontage, they may be suitable for additional storm water best management practices associated with mitigating storm water runoff from West Street. Although both of these lots are constrained by wetlands, drains, and a vernal pool, some interior portions still exist that could accommodate a small multi-use recreational field in the future. On behalf of the Conservation Commission, I urge your support for this article.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brian Cole, Precinct eight. Everybody hear me? Very good. I understand that this is not a question and answer forum, but since there was no pre-town meeting forum, I was hoping the Conservation Committee would, could answer me anyways. I counted twenty-two town-owned parcels that were on the warrant at the January Special Town Meeting but are not on the warrant tonight. Could you tell me why those parcels were not included and then what the plan is for those parcels moving forward? Thank you.
Mr. Bontempo, would you care to answer that question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In fact, to the best of my knowledge, and I don't, I haven't done an actual count, but I think what the previous speaker question is in regards to is actually Article twenty-one, which is on the warrant. And has, it could total twenty or more separate parcels that we will be seeking later on this evening to transfer to the custody of the Milford Conservation Commission. So I hope that answers the question.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Kunsigley?
First of all, I would like to thank the Town Planner and also the Conservation Board. I believe at the last hearing, we had a lot of parcels here and clearly town meeting members could not get a visual or identification on where the parcels were. What's been provided tonight is enormously helpful, I believe, to all members so they can physically see what parcels and how it impacts wetlands, endangered species, and the like. In addition to that, it indicates, you know, possible recreational use. So I guess my question to the Conservation Board and to town meeting members on the awareness aspect of it, if this does fall under the Conservation Board's authority and the Conservation Board decides that they want to throw a recreational facility, whether it's a putting green or any other facility on a conservation-controlled aspect that they now control, does it need town meeting vote or just conservation approval without town meeting vote?
Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Bontempo?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. To, on that question, I can tell you from my experience on the board that the answer, the short answer would be probably no. You may be aware, town meeting members, that Parks Department presented a proposal for a dis golf course in the, what was known as the Kunsigley property. And that was very thoroughly vetted by the Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission is not on its own going to decide to use a town-owned parcel probably for a recreational purposes, purpose. That would come from a, another town department like the Parks Department. And then we would review the proposal, see if it fits in with the mission of the Conservation Commission, which is to encourage active and passive recreation, but also wetland protection, open space protection, storm water management, and the other areas that we're statutorily responsible for. So would it require town meeting approval? Probably not, in my experience, but it may.
Does any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Abizla?
Hi, good evening. Ross Abizla, Precinct three. I'm against Article sixteen for a couple of reasons. One, I think Conservation Commission is doing a great job. I appreciate all the information that they provided for this article. But I think it's a waste of the town meeting's time to approve it. If I remember correctly, if we transfer this to the Conservation Commission, it's a two-thirds vote. So if we want to take it away from the Conserva, excuse me, Conservation Commission, it'll again be a two-thirds vote, whether it be by the Parks Department or some other department. In the definition that I received in my town meeting article, they say that the interior portions still exist that could accommodate a small multi-use recreation field in the future. All for it. Looking at the FinCom's recommendation, they say it's a piece of land that has no commercial value, brings in no tax revenue, is near sensitive wetlands. So by transferring this parcel of land to the Conservation Commission in the future, we'll have to take town meeting time by a two-thirds vote and transfer it to some other entity so it could perhaps be used for a multi-use recreation facility. It's not being used and has no commercial value. Why bother to change it at all? Just to leave it the way that it is? It saves us time. There's no effort or money involved. If one of the other groups decides that they want to include a multi-use recreation field in there, we don't have to do the two-thirds passing because it's already under the jurisdiction of the town. Thank you. I urge you to not pass this.
Does any other vote to care to be heard? Motion's been made. Do I have a second? Motion's been made and seconded to move the previous question. It's attempted cutoff debate. It's not debatable and requires a two-thirds vote.
I can't hear.
What the hell? Why?
Yeah.
That's really stupid. But that's just the fact, it's okay. We don't see that.
Yeah.
Well, that, 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 that's good.
All in favor of moving the previous question? All yes and all opposed no?
Ninety having voted in favor, twelve opposed. Necessary two-thirds vote has been acquired. So now the question comes upon the motion. The town vote pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter forty, Section fifteen, to transfer the care, custody, and jurisdiction of the following two owned parcels totaling eleven point three-three acres to the Milford Conservation Commission. Assessors map thirty-seven, block zero, lot eleven. Area ten point zero seven acres. Assessors map thirty-eight, block zero, lot five. Area one point two-six acres. The purpose being to preserve said parcels located off of Upper West Street for conservation and recreation purposes, storm water management, wetlands, and open space protection as recommended in the Milford Comprehensive Fin, excuse me, yeah, Milford Comprehensive Plan. Again, pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter forty, Section fifteen, transfer of town-owned parcels of land requires a two-thirds vote. At this time, all those in favor will vote yes. All those opposed, no.
I'm just getting paid. I'm saying that she's, she has said.
Ninety-six having voted in the affirmative, sixteen opposed. Necessary two-thirds has been met. The motion is carried. It is now past ten o'clock by town meeting rule. We need a motion to continue. So I'll entertain a motion.
So move, Mr. Chair. Mr. Moderator.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to continue after ten P M. This town meeting session. No, this. So the question comes upon the motion to continue the May twenty-fourth Annual Town Meeting. All those in favor will vote yes. All those opposed, no. Seventy-eight in favor, thirty-five opposed. The motion is carried. Article seventeen is Mrs. Hornberger of the School Committee. Article seventeen is uh Mrs. Hornberger of the school committee.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the school committee for the procurement of equipment needed for a biotechnology, chemical, and physical science laboratory at the high school, which will encompass issues of environmental sustainability, understanding chemical relationships, and luminescence, technology, and engineering.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the school committee for the procurement of equipment needed for a biotechnology, chemical, and physical science laboratory at the high school, which will encompass issues of environmental sustainability, understanding chemical relationships, and luminescence, technology, and engineering. Does the finance committee have a recommendation? Mr. Morin?
Favorable.
Finance committee recommendation is favorable. Any voter care to be heard? Mrs. Hornberger?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting recently supported an upgrade to our labs for biomedical science and biotechnology. On behalf of the district, we are incredibly grateful for your support. This is phase two of the lab investment in Milford High School. This funding will provide students an improved education in STEM fields and supports the remodeling of two additional lab spaces, physical science and chemical science. All purchases are transferable and can be relocated in the future if needed. The investment of one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars will be spent on spectrophometers, three D scanners, pH meters, sensors, lab quits, lab kits, excuse me, and other equipment. These labs were on the capital plan for this last October. However, we did not move them forward. We were asked to delay them due to COVID uncertainties. Acquiring them now allows the district to get a full year out of this curriculum. Your continued support to provide hands-on lab experiences for our students is appreciated. Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard? Mr. Visconti?
My hand was raised, raised for the last, for the last comment, not for this one. But while I have you, you did not recognize the person that made the motion to move the last question, hence the vote on that was invalid. And we should go back to that question.
I believe that, well then, I, I believe I did recognize the person who was, I believe it was Attorney Vellani. Excuse me, attorney, uh, Town Councilbody moved the question.
Oh. Okay, but once, unlike every other uh, uh, speaker, you recognize the speaker and who identified themselves. I see no reason why you should not have recognized that, that speaker who could recognize, who could uh, uh, identify himself. In any case, the vote as far as I'm concerned was invalid, and we should go back to that question.
I don't think we're gonna be going back, Mr. Visconti. Uh, does any other ca- voter care to be heard? Uh, Thomas La Par- Pratt?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, so as a Milford High School senior, I've been in a few uh, science classes at the school, and I definitely support this article. Uh, I mean, I think that being in the classrooms gives me kind of a unique perspective on just how outdated and in some cases non-functional a lot of the equipment that we currently have is. Uh, the two things that can come to mind immediately are the, the sinks and the sources of gas that you would attach a Bunsen burner to. Uh, those, every single classroom has at least a few of those that aren't functional. Uh, and then there's plenty of other pieces of equipment that are either outdated at best or broken at worst. Uh, so I think that this, this article would, you know, greatly uh, improve the science situation at the high school. Uh, all of the things it's gonna focus on, I think, are great things to teach the students. And I think that delaying this until the construction of the next high school would be a disservice to the students that would be going to the school in the meantime. Thank you.
Does any other voter care to be heard? Okay, if not, the question comes upon the motion uh, as presented, which was to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the school committee for the procurement of equipment needed for a biotechnology, chemical, and physical science laboratory at the high school, which will encompass issues of environmental sustainability, understanding chemical relationships, and luminescence, technology, and engineering. All those in favor will vote yes, all those opposed, no. One hundred voting yes, seven no. The motion is carried. Article eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to adopt, re-adopt, and accept the provisions of Section twenty of Chapter thirty-two B of the Massachusetts General Laws as amended by Section fifteen of Chapter two, two hundred and eighteen of the Acts of two thousand and sixteen, establishing and other post-employment benefit liability trust fund to authorize the select board and treasurer to execute a declaration of trust creating an expendable trust for the purpose of holding monies appropriated to such fund. To think, to designate the treasurer as the trustee of such trust, to authorize the transfer of all, of any and all monies currently held for the purpose of paying retiree health and life benefits to such trust, and to authorize the trustee to invest and reinvest the monies in such fund in accordance with the prudent investor rule established under Chapter two hundred and three C of the Massachusetts General Laws.
Second. Thank you. Mo- motion's been made and seconded that the town vote to adopt, re-adopt, and accept the provisions of Section twenty of Chapter thirty-two B of the Massachusetts General Laws as amended by Section fifteen of Chapter two hundred and eighteen of the Acts of two thousand and sixteen, establishing an other post-employment benefits liability trust fund to authorize the select board and treasurer to execute a declaration of trust creating an expendable trust for the purpose of holding monies appropriated to such fund, to designate the treasurer as a trustee of such trust, to authorize the transfer of any and all monies currently held for the purpose of paying retiree health and life benefits to such trust, and to authorize the trustee to invest and reinvest the monies in such fund in accordance with the prudent investor rule established under Chapter two hundred thre- three C of the Massachusetts General Laws. Does the finance committee have a recommendation? Mr. Morin?
Favorable.
Finance committee recommendation is favorable. Uh, any voter care to be heard? Mr. Pillar?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This article is to adopt, re-adopt, and accept the provisions of Section twenty of Chapter thirty-two B of the Massachusetts General Laws as amended by the Acts of two thousand and sixteen, also known as the Municipal Modernization Act. Currently, our other post-employment benefit trust is not expend- non-expendable. The acceptance of this article will allow the select board and the treasurer to execute a declaration of trust creating an expendable trust for the purpose of holding monies appropriated to such fund. It would also designate the treasurer as a trustee of such trust. This will allow the town to authorize the transfer of such monies to pay for the cost of the retiree health benefits as well as future retiree employee health benefits. We currently appropriate six hundred thousand dollars to this fund, and such monies will be invested in accordance with the prudent investor rule. I ask for your support on this article. Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will vote yes, all those opposed, no. Ninety-nine voting in favor to oppose. The motion is carried. Just like to address Article seventeen, uh, Mr. Visconti's concern. Uh, the motion was maybe behind me. I should have recognized who it was, but I did not. The motion was seconded. Uh, Mr. Visconti, you are free. Uh, it's your right if you want to reconsider Article seventeen uh, and see if the town meeting will want to take it up again. Uh, we can certainly do that. Uh, Mr. Visconti?
Uh, uh, let's not, let's not belabor it. Just let it, let it go. Thank you for, thank you for your, for your, for your thoughts, though.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Visconti. Uh, Article nineteen. Move to pass over Article nineteen, Mr. Moderator?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass over Article nineteen. Uh, it's a motion to pass over as an attempt to take no action on any article as inserted in the warrant. It is debatable. Does any voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over. All those in favor will vote yes, all those opposed will vote no. One hundred two in favor, one opposed. The motion is carried. Article twenty is again the school committee, Mrs. Hornberger.
I vote, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of sixty thousand dollars. Said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the school committee for the purpose of replacing a two thousand and seven Ford F three fifty plow truck and a two thousand and five van with the purchase of a multi-maintenance plow vehicle.
Do I have a second? Motion's been made and seconded that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of sixty thousand dollars. Said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the school committee for the purpose of replacing a two thousand and seven Ford F three hundred, excuse me, F three fifty truck, plow truck, and a two thousand and five van with the purchase of a multi-maintenance plow vehicle. Does the finance committee have a recommendation, Mr. Morin?
Favorable.
Finance committee recommendation is favorable. Does any voter care to be heard? Mrs. Hornberger?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, this vehicle is needed to support the work of our facilities team. The school department currently has two vehicles, a two thousand and five van and a two thousand and seven truck, both of which have failed safety inspection and are no longer safe to operate. Performing repairs on these vehicles aged sixteen and fourteen years respectively is no longer a cost-effective option. We are proposing replacing both vehicles with one that can serve as a daily maintenance vehicle, supporting our school as follows: responding to daily service calls throughout the district, moving furniture, materials, food, and equipment between buildings, as well as supporting snow and ice removal on all the aprons and sidewalks around our schools. Vehicle will be purchased equipped with a full-size sander and plow from the state-approved vendor list, and the district has received quotes which do not exceed sixty thousand dollars. Thank you.
Does any other voter care to be he- heard? Mr. Visconti?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, I, I, I'm wondering if the sponsor might be able to tell us why it has to come from a state-approved vendor list? Why eliminate and rule out uh, local uh, dealers who may give us a better deal on this vehicle? Seeing that there is no requirement whatsoever that we, we, we purchase a vehicle from a, from a state vendor list.
Thank you, Mr. Vis- Visconti. Does any other voter care to be heard? Nope. If not, the question comes upon the motion to town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of sixty thousand dollars. Said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the school committee for the purpose of replacing a two thousand Ford F three fifty plow truck and a two thousand and five van with the purchase of a multi-maintenance plow vehicle. All those in favor will vote yes, all those opposed, no. One hundred one having voted in the affirmative, five opposed. The motion is carried. Article twenty-one, Conservation Commission, Mr. Bontempo, Noel Bontempo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My apologies. I move uh, that the town vote pursuant to General Law, Chapter forty, Section fifteen, to transfer the care, custody, and jurisdiction of the following thirty-seven town-owned parcels totaling six point six acres to the Milford Conservation Commission.
Article protects the same as appears in the warrant?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to waive the reading of the remainder of the motion if it's exactly as it appears in the warrant that all town meeting members have. Um, is it exactly the same, Mr. Bontempo?
Yes, it is, Mr. Moderator.
It is the same. Does any voter care to be heard on the motion? If not, then the question comes upon the motion to waive. Mr. Can- Okay. If not, then the question comes upon the motion to waive the remain- reading of the remainder of the motion. Okay, so the motion comes... Question comes upon the motion to waive the reading of the remainder of the main motion. All those in favor will vote yes. All those opposed, no. One hundred six voting yes, none opposed. Motion is carried unanimously. Does the finance committee have a recommendation, Mr. Moran?
Adorable.
Finance committee recommendation is favorable. Any vote occur to be heard, Mr. Bontempo?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The purpose of this article is to transfer the thirty-seven listed town-owned parcels to Conservation Commission jurisdiction. Doing so will preserve the parcels for water resource protection, stormwater management, wetlands, and open space protection and conservation purposes, all as recommended in the Milford Comprehensive Plan. The thirty-seven parcels total 6.6 acres in area and are in the general vicinity of Stoll Brook, being located at the southerly end of Broad Street and Fairview Avenue. The majority of the parcels are each only approximately .11 acres in area. All of the listed parcels are within the Zone Two aquifer and are within or adjacent to floodplains and wetlands associated with Stoll Brook itself. On behalf of the Conservation Commission, I urge your support for this article.
Does any other vote occur to be heard, Mr. Consigli?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, once again, I want to thank the Conservation Board and the Town Planner for putting these detailed maps up. Clearly, it's very helpful. And again, I'm not trying to belabor the aspect concerning this, but since it's under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Board, I'd like to ask Town Councilbody if the Conservation Board makes a decision to utilize some of this land for recreational purposes, does it come back to town meeting for town meeting vote? Or is it strictly under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Board or an assigned department for the allowed use of maybe what someone may want to do? For instance, a frisbee golf course that may not benefit the entire community, maybe just 20% of the community. I'm just looking for clarity on where this lies from the authority aspect of who allows the uses and does town meeting have a vote to that?
Town Councilbody, would you please, if you care, answer the question?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. We've had this situation recently with land over by Milford Pond, and the reality of the situation is simply this. The land is transferred under the jurisdiction control of the Conservation Committee, or Commission, I should say, and having been transferred, it's subject to whatever conditions of transfer are made by the town meeting as a body. In this case, it is transferred for use as recreation. The issue has arisen in the past. What sort of recreation, whether it must be passive or whether it could be more active, and what does the passive recreation mean? That has been fully vetted before the Conservation Commission. It has been determined that this golf, for example, is not passive, but it is within the recreational uses that are permitted by the transfer. In answer to Mr. Consigli's question, the property does not come back before the town meeting for approval of the use. It would be within zoning, for example, if it were a zoning issue, and certainly within the Conservation Commission as the authority to whom this is transferred.
Does any other vote occur to be heard, Mr. Visconti?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. A number of years back, the town spent thousands of dollars having a comprehensive plan prepared. In that comprehensive plan, it enumerated a number of times that Milford is severely lacking in protected open space, and the recommendation was to somehow preserve that and protect that open space. The best way to preserve the open space that is in this article is to place it under the jurisdiction of a Conservation Commission, who will see to it that this land is protected from here on. Please approve this article. Thank you.
Care to be heard? Mr. Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Brian Cole, precinct date. I would like to ask the Conservation Commission again, if I could. This article is missing a number of the parcels that were listed in Article twenty-two at the January town meeting. For example, Assessor's Map forty-five, Block zero, Lot ten B. I have it here as thirty-nine plus acres, you know. So, if I could, I would like to ask the Conservation Commission, what is the plan for those parcels that were left off of this round of protections?
Excuse me.
Thank you.
Does any vote occur to be heard? Any other vote occur to be heard? With respect to Mr. Cole's question. If not, the question comes upon the motion. It's too late, Mr. Cole. The question comes upon the motion that the town vote pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty, Section fifteen, to transfer the care, custody, and jurisdiction of the following thirty-seven town-owned parcels totaling 6.6 acres to the Milford Conservation Commission. Said parcels are enumerated in the town meeting warrant, the purpose being to preserve said parcels that are located off the southerly end of Broad Street and Fairview Avenue and adjacent to Stoll Brook for aquifer and water resource protection, wetlands and open space protection, stormwater management, and conservation purposes as recommended in the Milford Comprehensive Plan. Again, a vote pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty, Section fifteen, requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor will vote yes. All those opposed, no. Okay. Ninety-seven having voted in the affirmative, five opposed. The motion is carried and necessary two-thirds vote has been acquired. Article twenty-two is again the school committee. Mrs. Hornberger.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,763.68, said sum being consistent with the funds raised from vending machines in the Milford School District to be spent under the jurisdiction of the school committee for purposes of student activities not funded in the school department budget.
Motion's been made and seconded at the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,763.68, said sum being consistent with the funds raised from the vending machines in the Milford School District to be spent under the jurisdiction of the school committee for purposes of student activities not funded in the school department budget. Does the finance committee have a recommendation? Mr. Moran?
Adorable.
Finance committee recommendation is favorable. Does any vote occur to be heard? Mrs. Hornberger.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, this article allows the transfer of revenue from vending machines at the high school to the student activities account. The amount has historically ranged between $2,000 and $5,000. It's on the lower side this year due to the pandemic. Prior to the funds being utilized, a proposal will be made to the school committee from the Milford High School principal. So I cannot say with certainty how this $2,763 will be allocated. I can share that historically, the funds have been used to support academic decatholons, college campus visits, CPR training, and after-prom donations to student leadership. Thank you.
The question comes upon the motion as presented, which was to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,763.68, said sum being consistent with the funds raised from vending machines in the Milford School District to be spent under the jurisdiction of the school committee for purposes of student activities not funded in the school department budget. All those in favor will vote yes. All those opposed, no. One hundred two voting in favor, four opposed. The motion is carried. Article twenty-three. Selectman Attorney O'Laughlin.
Town meeting members, I move that the town vote to authorize the select board to petition the legislature for special legislation to provide for the grant of an additional license for the sale of all alcoholic beverages not to be consumed on the premises, which legislation shall provide substantially as follows. Section one, notwithstanding Section seventeen of Chapter one thirty-eight of the General Laws, the licensing authority of the town of Milford may, upon receipt of a completed application, payment of any applicable fees after a public hearing and all the due process and its sole discretion, grant one additional license for the sale of all alcoholic beverages not to be consumed on the premises under Section twelve of said Chapter one thirty-eight to Arcos Market at thirty-four Main Street, Milford, Massachusetts. Said license to be subject to said Chapter one thirty-eight except Section seventeen. Section two, this act shall take effect upon its passage.
Do we have a second? Motion's been made and seconded that the town vote to authorize but not require the select board to petition the legislature for special legislation to provide for the grant of an additional license for the sale of all alcoholic beverages not to be consumed on the premises, which legislation shall provide substantially as follows. Section one, notwithstanding Section seventeen of Chapter one thirty-eight of the General Laws, the licensing authority of the town of Milford may, upon receipt of a completed application, payment of any applicable fees after a public hearing and all due process and in its sole discretion, grant one additional license for the sale of all alcoholic beverages not to be consumed on the premises under Section twelve of said Chapter one hundred thirty-eight to Arcos Market, thirty-four Main Street, Milford, Massachusetts. Said license to be subject to said Chapter one hundred thirty-eight except Section seventeen. Section two, this act shall take effect upon its passage. Does the finance committee have a recommendation? Mr. Moran?
Adorable.
Finance committee recommendation is favorable. Any vote occur to be heard, Attorney O'Laughlin?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, Joe and Teresa Sequera, residents of Milford, opened Arcos Market at thirty-four Main Street sixteen years ago. They're seeking to increase their present retail package store license from beer and wine to an all-alcoholic beverage license. The Sequeras respectfully ask for your support of this article and their local business.
Does any other vote occur to be heard, Mr. Visconti?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have no objection to Arcos Market having an alcoholic license. What I do object to is having to apply for a special additional license beyond our quota when there are at least two licenses out there that are being held without being attached to a premise. They're just being held, waiting for the opportunity to sell them to a prospective buyer who may want to have it transferred to them. We need to recall any and all licenses that are out there and not being used so we don't have to waste town meeting time on articles like this. Once again, I want Arcos Market to be granted the license, but not like this. Call in the licenses that are out there not being used and award Arcos Market a license within the quota through the usual routine process. Thank you.
Does any other vote occur to be heard? Mr. Cole?
Sorry, I only wanted to clarify that it's my understanding that the licenses the previous speaker referenced are pouring licenses, that is, for the serving of, say, beer or wine on the premises, and the article in front of us is for a liquor license to be bought and sold. Thank you.
Does any other vote occur to be heard? If not, then the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will vote yes. All those opposed, no. Eighty-four having voted in favor, nineteen opposed. The motion is carried. Article twenty-four is the Personnel Board. Mr. Miranda.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to amend Personnel Bylaw, Section three-five, Service Records, by deleting the current Personnel Bylaw three-five in its entirety and inserting in its place instead the following new bylaw, Section three-five. Service records shall be established and maintained for all employees who are subject to the provisions of the Classification and Compensation Plan. The Director of Human Resources shall determine the contents of the service record and shall maintain the non-financial portion of the service record, with Town Treasurer to maintain the benefits and financial portion of the service record. In order to maintain the said service record, the Personnel Board shall review for accuracy all changes in salaries or wages of employees other than general annual cost of living adjustments whose positions are included in the plan prior to entering said changes on the town's payroll.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Moderator, I offer an amendment or modification to the motion as made. If I may explain why.
Sure.
When this was drafted, between the various iterations of it being drafted, it was recognized that the way that this particular article is written and the motion that supports it this evening leaves off a sentence out of three-point-five, which was not intended to be deleted. So the language after the article, the word payroll in the article with quotations, should then be the language. "In order to maintain the said service records, the Personnel Board shall review for accuracy all changes in salaries or wages of employees other than general annual cost of living adjustments whose positions are included in the plan prior to entering said changes on the town's payroll." This addition keeps in three-point-five, Section three-point-five, the language that was never intended to delete. This is not adding new language to three-point-five. It's only maintaining language in three-point-five that otherwise would be deleted by this motion and this article as presented in the warrant. All other aspects of the proposal remain the same, except that this one sentence at the end, which is inadvertently deleted, would now stay within Section three-point-five of the bylaw.
Okay. Do we have a second on the motion? Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded that the town vote to amend Personnel Bylaw, Section three-point-five, service records by deleting the current Personnel Bylaw three-point-five in its entirety and inserting in its place instead the following new bylaw, Section three-point-five. "Service records shall be established and maintained for all employees who are subject to the provisions of the Classification and Compensation Plan. The Director of Human Resources shall determine the contents of the service record and shall maintain the non-financial portion of the service record, with Town Treasurer to maintain the benefits and financial portion of the service record. In order to maintain the service record, the Personnel Board shall review for accuracy all changes in salary or wages of employees other than general annual cost of living adjustments whose positions are included in the plan prior to entering said changes on the town's payroll." Does the finance committee have a recommendation? Mr. Morin. Recommendation of the finance committee is to refer to sponsor. Does any voter care to be heard? Mr. Miranda.
Hello, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Miranda.
I agree with the amendment.
Does any other voter? There's no amendment to approve, Mr. Miranda. Would you care to speak on why the town should adopt these changes to the Personnel Bylaw, Section three-point-five?
Well, the issue was that they were going to be, there would be a clerical error in writing it up, and it's currently there and we were going to remove it, and we'd like to put it back in.
The, it's already been modified in the motion, so there is no need to amend it, and it was done before the motion was seconded and brought before the discussion for the town meeting members. So at this point, you are...
I have nothing left to say, then.
Okay. Does any other voter care to be heard?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Town Councilbody.
This, this article, three-point-five, in the Personnel Bylaws precedes the creation of the position of Human Resources Director within the town. What this does is it gives authority to the Human Resources Director to not only compile and maintain service records, or in other words, employee personnel files, but also to determine what the scope of the documents included in such files should be. So what it's doing is it's updating the bylaws to keep pace with the advancement of our town government and the expansion and creation of new positions to it, in particular to it, the Human Resources Director. This is not done in any way to take away authority from anyone else. It's merely to vest within the Human Resources Department those typical duties which would be found in any resource department, either in the private or the public sector. For all of these reasons, this streamlines our government, makes it more effective, maintains consistency and equity throughout all levels and all bureaus and departments of the town of Milford, and for that reason, I strongly encourage its support and passage.
Okay. Does any other voter care to be heard? Mr. Nero.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a quick question. I've gotten this article. Is this, I understand about the service record, which is great, is this tied to a performance review plan by the managers on their employees? I mean, it seems like it would make sense, because Mr. Body had talked about the private, the private sector. That's what we're accustomed to in the private sector, that our managers review the employees, and that would go to the Human Resources Director as well. Is this tied to a performance review plan for the town's employees as well? Thank you.
Does any other voter care to be heard with respect to Mr. Nero's question?
No.
No.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Abizla.
Ah, yes. I'd like some clarification on this article. There was a motion made to move the town vote to amend the Personnel Bylaw, and then on the screen here, the description begins with service records and then ends in town payroll. But I understand that there's another line that we don't see here that we're being asked to vote on, and that was changed. I don't understand how, because there's a motion on the floor to move the article to vote for this, so there had to be an amendment to the article to remove the new text after the word payroll. Could we see a complete definition of Article twenty-four that we can vote on, please? Thank you.
I believe that what was printed in the warrant did not contain the last sentence that appears on the motion in your screen that starts "in order to maintain the said service record." And I think the Personnel Board met prior to the meeting and agreed, voted to include that language in the motion. It's not really an amendment to any motion. If anything, it's a modification, and any modification can be made to a main motion before it's presented to town meeting, and that's the case here. So there really is no amendment to the motion. It's a modification, and that's what appears right now as the motion that is under discussion. If, if the question was stated by the moderator, in which case I would have said, "Does any other voter care to be heard?", and that last sentence was not included, then it would, the motion would be subject to amendment, as is typically done here at town meeting. But that's not the case here, so it's just a modification which can be made any time before a question is stated. Does any other voter care to be heard? Mr. Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Maybe the sponsor can clarify for us. Are we saying that prior to this article, there were no personnel files kept anywhere? In other words, what is the difference that we're asking for here between what they're asking for now and what was done in the past? My sense is that what this is saying is that prior to this article, there were no personnel files kept. Am I correct in assuming that, or am I not? Maybe the sponsor can clarify that for us.
Does any voter care to be heard with respect to Mr. Visconti's question?
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Attorney Body, Town Councilbody.
Rule three-point-five of the Personnel Bylaw as it currently exists states as follows. "Service records shall be established and maintained for all permanent employees who are subject in any way to the provisions of this plan. The record shall show the name, address, date of birth, date of employment, veteran status if any, and a chronological record of wage or salary progression, civil service and other ratings if any, and such other information is maybe deemed necessary or desirable for proper administration of the plan." That portion of it will be deleted. It further says, "In order to maintain the said service records, the Personnel Board shall review for accuracy all changes in salaries or wages of employees other than general annual cost of living adjustments whose positions are included in the plan prior to entering said changes on the town's payroll." There have been, and for years, employee files and records. What Rule three-point-five did, or Section three-point-five, I correct myself, did was it established that there were records maintained and what those records would contain, what would be included. It also gave to the Personnel Board certain authorities to review for accuracy the changes with respect to cost of living adjustments. What is attempted here now is to allow the Human Resources Director to maintain the files and to exercise her discretion, or his as the case may be in the future, to include within those files all records that he or she deems fit and deems to be necessary to maintain a comprehensive personnel record. If this article were to be adopted tonight in the form that it is submitted in the article, it would remove from authority and review of the Personnel Board their general review authority for accuracy in changes in wages and salaries. What is attempted here, because when it was submitted for the warrant, it said to delete entirely that section, and it was suddenly realized that a deletion would take away that power from the Personnel Board, the amendment made is simply to return the authority to the Personnel Board and thereby maintain the status quo. There's nothing new here, other than the authority that was generally vested, that said our employee files had to contain name, address, date of birth, date of employment, veteran status, is now within the discretion of the Human Resources Director, a job created within the past three years, a job which is specifically charged with the oversight of records such as these.
Does any other voter care to be heard? Mr. Rhodes.
Sorry for boring everybody with this, but this truly was my fault. In a number of iterations, in a number of iterations of this, of this article, that last sentence got dropped out inadvertently. It should never have been dropped out. As, as, as the town council said, this establishes the HR director's ownership of the town financial, but also clarifies that the financial records would be maintained by the town treasurer. This is, this is truly just a simplification and a clarification of the existing three-point-five without any other major changes. Thank you.
Does any other voter care to be heard? If not, then the question comes upon the motion. Does the town vote to amend Personnel Bylaw, Section three-point-five, service records by deleting the current Personnel Bylaw three-point-five in its entirety and inserting in its place instead the following new bylaw, Section three-point-five. "Service records shall be established and maintained for all employees who are subject to the provisions of the Classification and Compensation Plan. The Director of Human Resources shall determine the contents of the service record and shall maintain the non-financial portion of the service record, with Town Treasurer to maintain the benefits and financial portion of the service record. In order to maintain the said service record, the Personnel Board shall review for accuracy all changes in salary or wages of employees other than general annual cost of living adjustments whose positions are included in the plan prior to entering said changes on the town's payroll." All those in favor will vote yes. All those opposed, no. Eighty-six haven't voted in favor, nine opposed. The motion is carried. Mr. Taylor? You have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article twenty-five.
Hold on, hold on one second. Okay, Article twenty-five. Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I moved that the town vote to close out certain special article accounts to the general funds of the town. Article thirty-eight, the October two thousand nine.
The same as in the warrant.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to waive the remaining, excuse me, the reading of the remainder of the motion as the, as it appears, as, excuse me, as long as it exactly appears as in the finance committee report. Does any voter care to be, excuse me, do I have a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Does any voter care to be heard on the motion to waive the reading of the remainder of the motion? Okay, I forgot, that's okay, you can put that up. Mr. Taylor, are the details the same as they appear in the finance committee report?
They are, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. They are the same. Okay, ready? So the question comes upon the motion to waive the reading of the details. As long as they're the same as in the finance committee report, all those in favor vote yes. All those opposed, no. All those in favor vote yes, all those opposed, no. Ninety-three in favor, none opposed, motion is carried unanimously. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation? Mr. Morin?
Fairable.
Finance Committee recommendation is favorable, any voter care to be heard? Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. This article takes a look at past appropriations where projects have been completed and there is a remaining balance. There is no longer a need to continue to encumber these funds, though passing this article tonight will close them out to the undesignated fund balance and ultimately become part of a free cash calculation for fiscal year 2022. I urge your support, please. The total is $34,691.80.
Does any other voter care to be heard? I believe we had Ms. Mastriani?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
The text that we voted on for Article, the screen that we saw when we voted on Article 24 stated that the article was as stated in the warrant and we just had long conversation that the warrant text was inaccurate.
Okay, excuse me, Ms. Mastriani, we're discussing Article 25.
I understand and my hand has been raised since we were doing the vote. I apologize that it was not recognized earlier.
Okay, so we'll come back to it after we conclude with Article 25, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Does any other voter care to be heard on Article, yeah, 25? If not, the question comes upon Article 25 to see if the town will vote to close out certain special article accounts to the general funds of the town as enumerated in the Finance Committee report totaling $34,691.80. All those in favor, it's not appears in the warrant. Ready? Yep. I guess close enough at this point in time. So, the question comes upon the motion to close out certain special accounts to the general funds of the town as it appears in the Finance Committee report. All those in favor will vote yes, all those opposed will vote no. Ninety-four having voted in the affirmative, none opposed, the motion is carried unanimously. We'll return now to Ms. Mastriani's question with respect to Article 24.
The text on the screen when we voted on Article 24 stated as stated in the warrant.
Okay, well...
And the language that was explained to us by the Town Council was different from the text in the warrant.
Okay. The question that was put to vote was the motion that was presented to me, which includes the language that was not included in the warrant. What was put up on the screen evidently was, in that situation, was incorrect, but in any event, what matters is what comes out of my mouth, which was the correct motion that was put to vote. So, we'll now turn to Article 26. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 26, I moved that the town vote to transfer funds between certain line items voted under Article 4 of the June 29, 2020 annual town meeting for the purpose of making funds available in line item accounts not sufficiently funded through the end of fiscal year 2021.
Mr. Moderator, I move to waive the reading of the article if the text is the same as appears in the Finance Committee report mailed to town meeting members.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to waive the remaining, excuse me, waive the reading of the remainder of the motion as the text appears exactly the same as in the Finance Committee report that was mailed to all town meeting members. Does any voter care to be heard on the motion to waive the reading? If not, the question comes upon the motion to waive the reading. All those in favor will vote yes, all those opposed, no. Yes. Okay. Ninety-one having voted in favor to oppose, the motion is carried. Any other voter care to be heard? Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, this article is always the last to appear each annual town meeting warrant. It does not seek additional funding as all transfers are within existing appropriation and necessary to address unforeseen issues that did not rise to the level of reserve fund transfer. I urge your support to close out the book successfully this year. Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion to transfers funds between certain line items voted under Article 4 of the June 29, 2020 annual town meeting for the purposes of making funds available in line items accounts not sufficiently funded through the end of fiscal year 2021 as enumerated in the Finance Committee report. All those in favor will vote yes, all those opposed, no. Eighty-six having voted in favor, one opposed, the motion is carried. What is the pleasure of the meeting?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to dissolve the warrant for the May 24, 2021 annual town meeting. Any voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion to dissolve the warrant. All those in favor will vote yes, all those opposed, no. Eighty-six having voted in favor and unopposed, motion is carried unanimously. Therefore, the May 24, 2021 annual town meeting warrant is hereby dissolved. Thank you.